Welcome, thank you.
All right, it's three o'clock.
Three o'clock, okay, I'll call this meeting to order, roll call please.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Director Grasha.
Here.
Vice President Duncan.
Here.
And President Wright.
Here.
Thank you, we have quorum. Since there's no members of the public on the line, I will allow everybody to control their own mute buttons today.
Okay, so we'll do number three on Monday. So look at this, Arden, fifteen years. Person, number four, emergency, I'm emergency, employee recognition achievements. Fifteen years, boy. Then we've got Greg Chapman, wastewater treatment operator two for fourteen years. Jesus Gonzalez, field service representative one for fourteen years. Lee Boyer, chief plant operator, twenty years. I had to say that out loud because those are, that's really amazing, that's pretty cool. And you get a pin this year or something, don't you? Oh, you and Lee.
Yeah, I think Lee probably gets a better looking pin than me because he's twenty years.
I don't know, but we'll have to do that on Monday without a pin, but I don't know what we'll do, we'll just maybe somebody since you're at your office, maybe somebody can present it to you.
All right.
There is a second page of employee recognition because we included two months since we went dark in August.
Oh, thank you, okay, yes. Oh, and Joe Fernandez, thirteen years, Rick, field service representative two, Rick Lyons, interim field operation technician, fourteen years, and Shane Wick.
Why not?
Why not? Wastewater treatment operator two, fourteen years. My goodness. Between all of them, I haven't even added up yet, but the least amount of years is fourteen, so it's pretty cool.
With Arden, it only seems like it's longer than fifteen years.
I do, I was waiting for that comment.
Okay, we'll move on to public input. Yes, we don't have any, so we'll move on to item number six. Which is California Special Districts Association 2021 Committees and Expert Team Participation. Would any board member like to be nominated for any of those open seats or whatever? They're not the board, they're standing committee seats for CASA. If so, let us know, and Monday we can vote on it. So we do, we do vote on that, right, Dory?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is number seven. Resolution 2020 dash eighteen, Conflict of Interest Code update. This is an annual update. I believe it's annual for our conflict of interest code.
Every other year.
Every two years.
Every two years, okay, every two years. So, Arden, I'll give it to you, I know John, Mr. Pinkney wants to, do we have any, is there any changes or there's anything like that to?
Well, I think JP can, can comment on it. I mean, we've looked, we, we take a look at it, it not only covers what you have in the, in the staff report, but we take a look at it to see if there's any laws that have changed and, and so I think you had Lena look at it, didn't you JP? Did you want to mention anything about this?
Take it off mute here. No, it's just something that we're required to do every two years is to review it and make sure that, you know, it's current and so it's more of a housekeeping item than anything else.
So I take it there's no changes that are, that mean much of anything, maybe, maybe some, I don't know, is there any changes, John, do you know?
Yeah.
There were some title changes and we did add the Assistant General Manager position.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any positions that will no longer need to report that at one time may have needed to report or particular people that filled particular positions will no longer need to report that may have needed to report at any time in the past?
Just the executive assistant position was removed this year.
And, those that are keeping score may think this sounds like an innocent move. Many in the community would be outraged if they knew the weight of this change that you're making, and I would suggest that anyone that, after this is approved, anyone that wants to be taken seriously in the future of this district will have this back on this agenda in December. Thank you.
Okay, Conflict of Interest Code also goes along with your seven hundred forms. It tells you what you need to put on that for the most part. Okay, number eight. Number eight, Professional Service Contract Agreement with On Power Industries. I believe this is about testing and evaluating our, the MSWD's electrical facilities, I believe, so Arden, I'll pass that on to you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll let Danny, you know, make the presentation. It's, you know, basically, we need to evaluate this, all of our panels, et cetera. The, the ultimate thing is it's, it's an essential precautionary requirement and it helps us look, you know, what, it helps us dictate what sort of PPE we need. But Danny, go ahead and explain it. I'll let you take it from here.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board, staff. Can you hear me clearly?
I can.
Yep.
Okay, as Arden was mentioning, since about late 2018, we've, we've began or continued our of operations and whether that's equipment maintenance practices, and during the course of that action, there is a Calooshia required, an arc flash study be conducted, and what that is, is an evaluation of all our electrical, not just our wells and our booster sites, but our, here at the admin building, at the corporate, corporate yard, the electrical at the, at the wastewater plant. And what they do, they analyze, assess, I guess, the easiest way to say it is, what's all entailed in that particular electrical panel and they give a rating. There's a required placard or sticker that goes on the outside of the panel, and that notifies anybody, whether it's staff or contractor consultant approaches or does work in there, identifies which the proper PPE to, to wear. So this evaluation also has another smaller component to it, which is a separate capital project. It covers it entirely, but there will also be a portion of the infrared study that identifies any areas of weakness or concern inside the electrical components. What we're asking today is authorized the general manager to execute a contract with On Power Industries for the preparation of a arc flash of ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty thou, nine hundred, ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Answer any questions if there are any?
We did, yeah, and the other thing you might add, Danny, is that we did go out to, with proposals to get the qualified consultants. This is a very special sort of procedure, you might say. So, but, but we did, we did go out and, and so this is the, this is the consultant that we are recommending to the board.
Can I ask, how many, how did you go about creating a list of, of consultants that you approached to submit a bid and how many bids, bids did you receive? And was this publicly advertised in such a way that it would reach the maximum number of responsible bidders?
Director Grasha, that's a great question. Arden, thank you for that remainder. We here at the district for some time now have been using a bid portal called Planet Bids, and it reaches out to thousands and thousands of potential bids.
It's an industry standard. Yeah.
Yeah, the process is an industry standard. The, the portal that we use is again Planet Bids, and the, the simple way to answer that is the majority of contractors and professional firms out there are part of Planet Bids. They fill out a form of all the areas of expertise that they qualify for. So when we go out and put a project like this, this wasn't a bid process, this happened to be an RFP process. So it's not based off a bid, it's based off of qualifications. But what happens is, is we identify all the areas that would be prospective respondents to provide proposals, and the system sends it out to everybody. And those that may not get it, all get to view it, they're constantly looking at it. So it did go out to a public RFP process, it went out for thirty days, we did receive five respondent that were evaluated. And it's not based off of cost, it's based off of qualifications, and then of course, as you know, once you arrive at that point, you can then take a look at the cost, if the cost is exceeding your budget, you can negotiate at that time. In this case, there wasn't a need for that, but that's, that's the gist of the project, but we do use Planet Bids, and it's used by, used by hundreds, thousands of.
Okay, if I have any more questions, I'll ask them on Monday, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on that topic? Okay, we'll go on to number nine, Professional Service Contract Agreement with Sturtevant Emergency Management Consulting LLC. This is about getting, being qualifying for FEMA monies when necessary, when, if that ever hopefully doesn't, but that ever comes up in our future. Arden, General Manager?
Well, and I, you know, I think Danny, Danny did a good job. I want to, I want to state that in the staff recommendation, essentially what we will be, you're the product that you will see from this, is a, an update of our emergency response plan, which I have to compliment Danny and, and Bassam. We've really put a lot of emphasis into that over the past year, year and a half, and and a lot of that knowledge that we gained and, and a lot of the success that we've had in dealing with the pandemic has been because of our getting out of ahead of this emergency response. But this is a component of the emergency response plan that we need to, we need to look at. This, this risk and resilience assessment certification is, is, is a requirement that we need to complete, and I'm glad we're out in front of it. We bring it to you to let you know what we need in order to do this, and, and Sturtevant is, knows our system, is very responsive, and has helped us put much of our, our emergency response plan in work together. We've all sat through several training sessions and, and with him, and and we're gradually becoming more and more prepared for the emergency. So Danny, I'll let you fill in what I left out there, my friend. Danny, friend.
Thank you, Arden. So the, the part that I'll start off with, which I missed in the last item, I apologize, is we did go out to an RFP process, the same process, Director Grasha, that we did with previous project. And we received four respondents on this project. What staff is asking for today is provides the general manager to enter into a contract with sort of an emergency management consulting, and also augment the budget. This was something that we knew was coming, however, we didn't ask for it during the twenty-one budget preparation because there was just not enough information at that time to determine just a, an estimated number. We didn't know what that was, so this is a dual process. We're asking the board to also augment the capital budget by creating a seventy-nine thousand dollar project. The difference in what the bid amount is, or not bid amount, but the actual proposal amount is versus the, the capital request is to cover staff costs, contract management and management, project management of this project. So what is, what is a risk and resilient assess, it's essentially used to be a vulnerability assessment that was a requirement after nine eleven. And that assessment was to be updated, also to keep you eligible for other funding other than FEMA. This does have a FEMA component to it, but this is a US EPA requirement. We have completed our emergency response plan, as Arden mentioned. This will not, will not redo it. This will have certain requirements, we'll have language to complete it and certify it. That's an ancillary component of this. The main component will be the risk and resilience assessment, which is another way of looking at as a vulnerability. It looks malicious act, maximum hazards, resilience of our system, water and sewer, and it takes a look at the risks of our system, and it, and it is a private document. The requirement will, after the document's prepared, a version of that will go to the EPA, and ultimately will get certified. It's due, it's due by June thirtieth, it's twenty-one, at, at the last, at the later. And within six months of that, no later than December thirty-first, twenty-one, would be the certification of our emergency response plan, our ERP. So if it's done early, we'll also get the ERP done early, but we have some hard, fast deadlines of June thirtieth and November thirty-first. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Danny. Any other questions?
I have one. Does the staff report here include the names of all the bidders that were interested in the project? I haven't been able to go through the staff report yet, and if, if it doesn't, would, would you mind having somebody send me a list of those companies that submitted a proposal? Other than the?
Maybe Danny, you can have that for everybody on Monday.
Thank you, Madam President. Director Grasha, it does not, but I can actually speak with Dory to have it updated as information for Monday.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to number ten, Contract Amendment for Final Design of the West Valley Water Reclamation Facility. General Manager.
We, well, I'm gonna let Danny, of course, speak to you about this. What, he came in considerably higher than this, just for the record. Every project at this point, we look back and the designers, basically the engineers say, hey, look, you know, we started out, this was, this was our work schedule, or our work requirement. And as we move into the project, things come up and that we need to change some of the design. This reflects what they have identified as changes in their, the requirements that they had for this design. It's pretty much still pretty much in line with what all change orders would be for a project this size. I'll let Danny elaborate. But we did make some changes, and Danny can get into the details. But we, but we, we're getting very close to getting this project started. This is fun to get to this point. Danny, do you want to take it from there?
Good afternoon again. So as Arden alluded to, there, this is a large project, a large undertaking, and a design of this type expected to have change orders. It's, at this point in time, we're at less than five percent of, of the original contract amount. So as Arden also mentioned, this change order was around two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And TKE is our program manager, has been working at that to reduce it. Some of the issues were the delays that we incurred in working with the regional board to acquire a, the analysis for groundwater, the studies for the impacts to our neighboring, our well site. And the, so what we ended up having to tell them is that delay was outside of our control. They're the experts, they should have anticipated that. So fortunately, we were able to, to knock this down to a hundred and fourteen, to a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Through the thirty percent, through the sixty percent, there were some changes. We had to go back of some things that were noticed that we didn't cap, we didn't capture, they were outside of the scope. We changed fire sprinkler requirements, office space coordination, we, we changed a number of things from some permit requirement of metering and rerouting. So we did a number of things that made the project better for the district. And that, we added a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. This request is for a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Because just like some of the incidentals that we incurred, we would likely incur maybe a few more, it's hard to say, but this has been asked for to, ask the board for twenty thousand dollars additional. We won't spend it if we don't need it, but we're at the, the crossroads, that critical point right now with this project that we need to get to a hundred percent and meet our, our schedule, and likely if there is something else that goes past a hundred and fourteen, then we would have to come back to the board and ask for that to be approved again, and we're trying to keep this project on schedule. Is there any additional questions that I may be able to answer?
I have one. We had our work session on this plant a few weeks ago, and we covered very well the need for the plant and and many of the issues that, on, on the plant itself. But I don't think we addressed the economics of the plant as well as I'd like to have. So at some point, before we get too far along, I'd like to have another work session on that aspect of this project so that myself and the community at large would have a full understanding of how this works into our budget going forward. What's gonna have to happen to make this work for the district financially and the rate payers? You mentioned a couple of numbers in your, and I, and I, I might have missed where you were there. You said something about we're five percent, and then my, my impression was we were further along than that, so I might have misunderstood you, so maybe you could clarify that. How far along are we on the project altogether as far as the design aspect of it?
As far as the, the question, as far as how far along are we, we are anticipating via text that I received this morning in the coming weeks of the hundred percent design plans. That is likely not to have any changes or significant changes, but we will have to see what came out of our ninety percent plan review. So that is where we are with the project. As far as the numbers that I mentioned, the original contract served was one million, eight hundred and eight hundred thousand, three hundred, three thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. The hundred and fourteen thousand dollar, at a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars is what this actual change order really is, the work that's been done, the work that actually has been done outside of scope. And as I mentioned, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, staff is asking for the, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, allowing additional twenty thousand if needed to complete this project, because we are, we are very close to the finish line. And frankly, the project could incur another month delay to bring something back to the board.
Thank you. Timing is very important to us right now. We're, we have a number of different aspects to this that are playing with each other, and we're moving along quite, quite nicely with that. But we will, but we will need to, you know, to, to, to keep this project moving, so.
And, and some, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, this is a question I get frequently asked when I'm out at different events and stuff. And I realize that circumstances may, may change this from time to time, but do we have a, a general idea or a target date for completion of the project if we're online at all?
Yes.
Yes, it's, it's in twenty twenty-two. It's, it's on schedule. Director Martin, to be available for out to bid at the end of this year, beginning of the year. Looking to have that advertisement period open and award somewhere near the first quarter of twenty twenty-one and commence construction, which is anywhere from substantially complete, and for those that may understand what that is, is complete to a point where we can use the actual facility for its intended purpose. Now, the latter part of that schedule could go as high as twenty-four months, but at that point in time, there's commissioning processes and things like that that go along with it. But the, the real meat potatoes as part of this project is estimated to be completed in less than eighteen months.
Okay, thank you.
And if you look at it, you'll, and you'll know when you look at the, the the, the reports on our flows later on in the, on the agenda, you'll see that flows at the wastewater plant are maintaining a fairly high level. We need to get this plan in so that we can take some stress off that, especially the maintenance barrier that we're pushing on right now. You know, we're at the, the, you know, the eighty percent level, and we just need more capacity as soon as we can possibly get it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, well, more of a comment than a question.
Okay.
You know, like everybody else, I'm not anxious to spend potentially up to another twenty thousand dollars on, on design. But it's a lot quicker, cheaper and easier to do a change now if you're going to on paper rather than halfway through, or when the project's done, you need to start moving things around. That's not the time to fix problems, so, yes, you gotta do it. I, I would support it.
Yeah, definitely be like much less expensive now on the drawing part, yes. Anybody else?
If I may add, Madam President.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, the items that are on this change order are, were definitely outside the scope of the designer. These are, this is a fair request for change order. As I mentioned, the other items that we negotiated completely off of this change order were out of line, and we were successful in meeting on the same pages. But there were a lot of other items that required a lot more in-depth review as far as SCADA secured and seen some equipment. This is gonna be our flagship. This is a huge undertaking, so there's been several steps during this to value engineer it to get the project as, as low, low of a cost that we could because it was increasing due to the size. But there are valid reasons why this project incurred change orders.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if we don't hear anything else on that topic, we will move to number eleven. Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Plant Facility. Okay, on this one, I know we've been talking about the name, I'd like to throw out a couple of, couple of ideas on the, the name of this. I, you know, I don't, I don't know if anybody cares to, to look at changing the name, but I, I was thinking the other day, anyway, I came up with something that I think sounds pretty good. Anyway, so I'm throwing it out now and we can discuss it on Monday, or you can discuss it now, whatever you guys want to do. I was thinking of something like Mission Springs, either West Valley Water Management Facility or Mission Springs Water District, West Valley Water Management Facility. Or maybe if somebody likes to want to add in the word regional, Mission Springs Regional Water Management Facility or Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Management Facility. I think, I think when I looked up the word treatment facility, just didn't seem to, the, the definition just didn't seem to really fit. So management of water is what we're doing out there, so to me that fit a whole lot better. So I'd like to throw that out there and either discuss it now, or if you guys wanted to think about it and discuss it on Monday, or if you don't even want it, if you still want to call it whatever it's being called now, with the diff, the re, word regional isn't in there anymore, anyway. So anybody have any thoughts on it, or yes, Russ?
Yeah, all of the suggestions that you made, I like better than the one that's appearing here on the, on the, and I would like to explore that. Bear in mind that ninety-nine-nine percent of the time, people are gonna refer to it as MSD water, whatever we decide, not the entire.
That's right, that, right. That was why I had also put in there just Mission Springs and leave out the term water district. Everybody knows what the Springs is, makes it shorter. West Valley, that kind of connotates where it is, or regional water management facility, so just throwing it out there. And, you know, thanks again for wanting to name it after me, guys, but I think Mission Springs Water District needs to have, be the, the primary name out there. Because it, Mission Springs Water District gets the credit for what it's, what's all out there, so. Because it, Mission Springs Water District gets the credit for what it's, what's all out there, so. This, this wastewater treatment, so I, I think we need to keep Mission Springs name in it. Okay, no other comments on that one?
Yeah, no, we, I, I think Danny has some comments on the progress that we've made. For example, the, the meeting we had with the Regional Board, Danny might want to make, might have some additional information for you on this plan.
I know, I know Arden threw it out to you guys, but.
Danny, did you have any?
I know it's, I wasn't going to put you on the spot, Danny.
No, I, I, I do have just, it's, it's not a lot that's been going on. Thank you, Arden, and I, if I may, Madam President, I, there was a question that I don't know, I don't think it was for me to address, but the request for the workshop upcoming. I didn't mean to just miss that, but. Asked a question or made a comment, and I know that wasn't necessarily directed at me, I just wanted to make sure on the previous item. When we talked about the plant economics of the plant and understanding what would need to happen to make this happen, so. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
In case you've heard a discussion needed, as far as what, what's on the item right now, for item 11. Excuse me, let me turn my computer down. The, the workshop told the majority of the story of what's going on with the project. The opening statement in, in my report is that consultants are working on 100% design and it's due early September, so that's still on schedule, I did get that email confirmation, text confirmation this morning. We are continuing with the parcel map work that basically takes the, all the, take up our plant location. And we're going to make the well site one location, we're going to make the solar site a location, then we're going to make the planet's own parcel. It allows us to do vacation documents to vacate some of the easements that are no longer required for that, those parcels. That's happening, the bigger item that I may talk more about next month because it happened September, but we did meet with the Regional Board. Madam President did recuse herself from that, from that decision. It was a request of our TDS limits for our waste discharge requirements. We asked for 600, or asked for 750, we. Were being told that staff arrived at 630 milligrams per liter. And after the district reviewed our case, we didn't necessarily get 100% of what we wanted, but they did. They were flexible and they did provide us a decision of 5% more than we were asking. And they did make it known that because it's a new plant, that there's certain. Areas of, for, for example, if we were to, to get close to that level. That the violations are different than one that would be happening with a plant that's got under normal, this would be an interim, an interim level. So there was some good news that came out of that, we would have liked to have seen the Regional Board agree with 150 milligrams per liter request. As I stated, this is a September item, I will be bringing this back to the board in October with the actual. Letter from the Regional Board on their decision, but it's, it's a big milestone for the district to keep this project moving forward from a permit perspective. The requirement of said waste discharge, waste discharge requirements requires us to have monitoring wells. And so we're developing the completion of, or we're completing our monitoring well work plan. And what that means is there's a request for upstream of the plant and downstream of the, of the discharge where we recharge our water. And we're working on the final, that, those, those have been anticipated as part of the project costs and we will be moving forward. Possibly next month, if not the month after that, we will be coming to the board likely after, it's likely going to be in November. After we do RFP process for said monitoring well construction. And. The grant, the SRF grant application process is still being, is still moving forward, we received notification that's being reviewed, an environmental package in the application portion of it's being reviewed by the, the SRF folks. As far as the other component of this project, which is the West Valley Conveyance Line or the actual conveyance line that. At our workshop, that is starting to, to, to move forward as, starting to acquire our easements and, and gather the, the correct path for that. So things are still moving, the bigger, the bigger thing that's happened is we're anticipating the 100% plans and we finally met with the Regional Board. For our waste discharge requirements, be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
How, how close did you get to the? Your target amount, you run at 750, you got what?
6, 665.
And. Plant, we, we, we covered this in our other meeting, but I'm trying to, can you refresh my memory? What is it typically coming out of our existing plant, which I think we were well within that, I think?
Uh, right now, we're roughly, this is similar strength and flows would, would produce anywhere from about 590 to about 650.
And, and this one was, what was the final, 6?
65.
Okay, so, okay. If we see a continued increase in the base level. Throughout the system. What does that do to us when we start bumping up against that limit? What, what, if we see our, our groundwater increasingly being more elevated as time goes on. Is there, does it, do you have any idea how far out we are from that becoming an issue at the plant?
Well, the, the bigger, one of the, the major reasons why we were asking for 750. Is because we didn't, we, we were, we didn't, we didn't understand that interim limit. Had a lot more flexibility than one that's been a permanent limit, so.
I see.
So that gave us some flexibility, but to answer your question as far as not having a, a crystal wall. This plant in its early stages of the first year to three years may not see more than. 500,000 gallons to 600,000 gallons, so at that, that's essentially like a drop in a, in a lake, a drop in the ocean.
Right.
Impacts to that, but one of the major items that Steve Ledbetter, TKE and, and Arden Wallen were. Talking about is the impact to that groundwater basin, the Garnet Hill Groundwater Basin of the. Recharge of the Colorado River Aqueduct. And so that not to look at this as just not, not punish us to be the solution of the, the salt issue in the, in the valley, so. Those are our concerns, they were open-minded to, to listening to us. And as far as the time. I believe we're several, several years before we might even get up close to that. As the, the Regional Board staff indicated, the reason, the reason for these monitoring wells is to get a good. Proactive approach ahead of that so that we can start developing the plan and, and what that means for the district.
Excellent.
Yeah, you're welcome, the bigger concern was is if they required us to do advanced treatment now, the cost implications to this project. So if there's a need for it later, then that may make more sense as far as the planning, the planning horizon for this.
Danny, can I, can I build on that to, that the board understands that, you know, just. As, as, you know, as a, a bit of a, a heads up here more than anything. This valley is going to probably have to go into salt nutrient management. Of some type or form, but we want to do it as a valley-wide effort, because we, we might, we're going to have. You know, a, a brine that we need to deal with, well, the valley in itself can deal with it collectively and, and, and that is going to be a future requirement, as we said. That's why the 660 good was a win. From the standpoint of, you know, regardless of whether we had 760 or 660. We're going to have to start taking a look at, at the, the TDS, the salt nutrient management in the valley. And, and Nancy knows this more than anybody, that, that's where it's going, as soon as that salt nutrient management plan is completed, that we're also working on. That will be, if it's acceptable, integrated into the, the basin plan and that will dictate what the standard will be, and then all of the plants in the valley will be. Will be required to discharge accordingly, okay?
That's right.
Danny, a quick question on the conveyance line, how much flow will that alleviate from the Horton Plant?
Per the. Information in the packet for this meeting, roughly 200,000 gallons a day at, at currently.
Thank you.
The capacity is going to be greater than that though, probably.
The capacity of, of the, of the. Conveyance line, or in this case, the force main is far greater than that.
Okay, thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that, I'm, I'm sorry, Danny, I didn't mean to get you out there, I didn't realize that you were actually having a report on it this month.
No worries.
Okay, so that, we're done with that one, I'll go on to item number 12. The consent agenda. Anybody like, oh, that's really cool, we have a make the connection program recipient, that's really good, another one hooked up to sewer. Okay, if we don't, anybody wants to pull any of those for discussion, then we'll move on, if I don't see anybody. We'll move on to the public affairs report. I'll just turn it over to you, Victoria, since I know Rod, by David Arden, we'll cut out the middle person on this one.
Um, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and so as you'll see in your packet, and I'm just going to, going to go through some of the, the highlights you have. In your packet, quite a few items. I'm sorry, you have quite a few items for attachment, including some of the digital. And monitoring reports from both July and August, and so that added a little bit more. To the attachment packet, but. Um, to start first and, and just to carry over, senior inspirational words is still, you know, it's postponed until 2021. We don't have a new date yet, of course, you know, we aren't doing any large gatherings, so I'm just going to keep that as a standing item until we do. Know of a date and then I'll also communicate that with Dory to get that added to the calendar of events. Um, in terms of outreach, before we jump into any of the reports. And I, I realize I missed our special workshop in August. But I wanted to touch base on the high bills from an outreach component. And Matt, if I get any of the more technical questions relating some of those bills, I might throw them over to you, but. Currently what we're doing, before we go into what we have done. So yesterday we posted on Facebook acknowledging that the bills are going out this week. We anticipate them to hit mailboxes either yesterday or today. And so we posted like letting customers know that these bills are being mailed, there are some that may still contain some high bills. But we're encouraging customer, customers to reach out to the customer service team so that we can work with them. Um, already today on, on Facebook, we have had some individuals who have received their bill. I know customer service team has been on the phone non-stop, I've actually spoke with this customer myself today and. We are able to kind of go through their, their usage a little bit and, and understand their, their frustrations, so. Definitely kind of segueing into our digital ads that we have done for the month of September, which you will see in your packet. And as an attachment. It's the, you know, MSWD or we are here for you, which we are, and we are really encouraging our customers to call in. If they have a question, if they don't understand how or why, really want to have that touch point. So really, that's been the majority of our outreach as well, as you'll see in the September newsletter. We provided some leak detection tips, we talk about the billing assistance program. Which provides you a $100 credit on your water bill once a year, and if you'll recall from past board meetings. We did double that increase, the board doubled that increase from a $50 one-time credit to a $100 one-time credit. Especially considering, you know, COVID and these current pandemic situations. Also for customer service, just wanted to provide some numbers for you and, and Matt, you can speak to this, but some of the field service calls that we have received. And that were actually fields that customers, field customer service has gone out to customers. In August, we had 96, and as of September 14, we had 45, so, you know, it's definitely on trend, our field team is. Customer service field is pretty busy and Matt, I'm sure you can speak to that. Actually, I will pause there in case, Matt, you wanted to add anything before I go into what was previously done.
No, I don't need to add anything, but I'll answer any questions I can.
Okay, perfect, so past, as you'll know, as you, you do know, we did conduct some auto dialing. And this was a proactive, also transparent measure, as we're seeing on the. The dashboard that our customer service team has access to, we did see a, a large number of. Continuous consumption, and so we didn't also want to sit on that information because we had it, so we launched the auto dialing to let customers know that there might be some sort of leak. Previous, also August 26, there was that special board workshop to discuss, you know, high bills and how you could be having or why you might be experiencing a high bill. Also in the month of August in your bill, we did have a bill insert. Which talked about how you could spot water leaks, so it might look familiar because we kept the same image on the newsletter. And to keep that kind of consistent and that message consistent. Also, we included a bill message in August and we also launched that leak-specific webpage. I'll pause there for any questions, we're launching anything else.
See, well, Randy, you.
Victoria, for the, the guys that got on the service calls for August and so far in September. What are you hearing back, are there constant water runs, are people just using more water than? They think they are, the meter is more accurate, leaks, what are you hearing back, what's the norm? Or are you getting a report?
Well, that might, Matt might be able to answer that, that's more his team, him and April's team.
Sure. Um, it, it's a, it's a mixed response, we are helping customers find leaks on their property. That is a, a, a portion of the discovery. A lot of times there are irrigation system settings that the customer is not aware of. We can go in now and before, but we can go in and, and show the customer down to the hour where their water consumption is happening. And literally some customers have irrigations coming on at 10 o'clock at night or two in the morning or whatever the case may be, and they're, they're not even aware that that's happening. Their gardener has set up that way. It's a, it's a mixed bag, but, you know, we, we have better data now, so we're just trying to encourage our call, our customers. To call us and we can get that data to them and then together we can figure out what's going on on their property. Obviously, the new meters are more accurate, that's another part of the equation. Especially coming off of estimates, we talked about that in the workshop and that whole smoothing effect, so. There's a lot of different factors and each parcel is super unique, so. It's kind of across the board.
Okay, good, thank you.
Are you still getting phone calls, Matt, or is it?
Yes, they have subsided somewhat, but we are still getting calls and, and customers are still asking about, you know, the new meters and their consumption and so on and so forth.
Okay, thanks, Russ? You got to, you got to unmute yourself, Russ.
There we go, I, I brought this up in the last meeting and I, and I would like to pursue this, it, it sounds like we're, we're sliding a little bit that direction anyway, if we're going in and checking their. Their irrigation system and stuff and their timers and stuff, and, and so we are venturing onto private property beyond the meter. So I would like us to expand that a little bit, and particularly those. Homes that have went from a 40 or 50 a month bill to a 3, 4, or 500 dollar bill a month. And, and from a water conservation standpoint to, to go to perhaps, if, if our staff can't do it, to hire an outside contractor to come in and. Do a complete forensic analysis, and this would be for a relatively brief period of time until the. Till people get used to the, the new metering system and, and, and make the necessary adjustments in their, in their, in their water use. So I would like that to kind of expanded to include a, a, a detection. So I would like that to kind of expanded to include a detection service that goes a little bit more in depth in the, in the, in discovering where these leaks are occurring. And I think we could approach it from a standpoint of it being a water conservation issue, because one of the customers showed their water bill had an 80,000 gallon leak per month. And clearly, that's a waste of our, of our water, and we should, we should make every effort to, to assist the homeowner in stopping that. So anyway, I'd like the staff to maybe take a look at that and come back with some ideas if possible. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Russ.
I have one thought to add.
Oh, you're talking. It's a little bit, I can hardly hear you.
Sorry. The idea, I've seen other agencies offering to their customers. I think they, there was grants available for the, for instance, turf removal. They also had a program at one time offering sprinkler head replacement. I don't know if that extended to sprinkler valves as well, where the district would, if you bring them their receipt, they would pay for the expense of replacing the sprinkler heads. I don't, like I said, I don't know if that included new valves. But all in the, in the same vein to reduce the amount of water usage. And, yeah, go ahead.
Not to interrupt Director Russ, are you actually, not that you're stealing my thunder.
Okay, I'm sorry.
To discuss, we did receive some Prop 1 Round 1 funds for conservation efforts. And so actually, launching in October and working on some an insert and webpage and everything, we did receive some grant funds for turf removal rebates, as well as a toilet rebate. And so we will be able to offer customers $2 per square foot to, you know, convert any grass to desert friendly, and then also up to $100 rebate for a more energy efficient toilet. So that will be.
I saw one of our neighboring agencies write a check to one homeowners association for $47,000, and I was, whoa, whoa. That was for turf removal. So it can be done. I don't know how you work around all of the, it's like circling the drain, you know, you can get some real troubles going down that road. But if the, if the programs are out there, we want to pursue them, I think.
And Victoria, was that from the IRW MP? Was it through that 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 grant was? So all the five agencies that belong to the IRWM, or I guess there are six, got a piece of that?
That is, that's correct. Yes, MSWD and Coachella Water Authority, we both got toilet rebate funds, and then the majority of the agencies got some sort of turf conversion funds. So I'm excited to launch that because we have been getting some calls regarding, especially while a lot of people were sheltering in place for the toilet rebates. Because it's, you know, Lowe's and Home Depot, they always encourage customers to reach out to their water agencies as well, to see if any rebates are being offered. And then for the turf conversion. So I'm excited to launch those. So you'll be seeing some things coming out pretty soon, but those will be active in October.
Okay, good. Yeah, Russ?
Yeah, one, one more thing I forgot to bring up, and I know that Victoria's probably already just addressed this, but anybody that happens to be watching the meeting this afternoon, you know, a number of things affect people's high water bills that, that aren't involved with leaks and, and and that type of thing. And there's three areas that I know from looking at my own bill that caused my water usage to go up. Number one, as happens in the summertime normally, but this has been an exceptional summer. We've had 70-plus days of triple-digit record-breaking heat. And, and the temperatures go up, people use more water for irrigation and for personal consumption. With the people's hours being cut back and/or being laid off, a lot of people are at home where they would otherwise be at work for eight, or gone from the house for eight to 10 hours. They're at home. That's going to cause your water usage to go up. And the third thing, and I think is probably the biggest thing, kids are out of school. If you've got two or three kids that are home that are normally at school during the day, your water use is going to go up. So all these things, it's kind of like a perfect storm. All these things happening at the same time has caused people's water bill to go up. And I'm sure that, I'm sure that Victoria and others that address this issue are talking with the public, but I just wanted to to state the obvious, I guess would be a better way to say it. Anyway, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Russ. Okay, so anything else, Victoria?
Oh, I just, so just encourage you to go through the reports between, you know, our social media management, CV water counts, and then also our digital ads. What I did include, which, you know, normally I do the month looking backwards, but I did include the ones that are currently running both on Google and Facebook, just so you can see the types of campaigns that we have. So I welcome, you know, any feedback for future months to our different campaigns. Also, what you'll see, which it isn't listed here, but it's a photocopy of the Aqua News. And so on there, thank you for being an essential part of our membership page. We, very poor photocopy, but we did have some of our guys featured in their magazine. And so that was kind of cool. And then as well, President Bright, your reelection to the last co-chair was also highlighted.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we are getting some regional visuals, if you could say, some regional outreach. So that's all I have. As you know, you guys can always reach out, but I'm, I'm open to any other unrelated questions that might not be on this report.
Anybody? I can't see Ivan. You're there somewhere, aren't you, Ivan? I can't see you on my screen, anyway.
I'm still here.
Okay, you gotta speak up then, because I can't see you. If you want to say something, you want to ask a question. Okay, and if not, we'll go on. And Victoria, I think, I think what you did on these was very good, very good. I liked them.
And actually, since you point that out, and I remember that there was a second side, the rebates insert that will be going out in October will also be bilingual.
This side's bilingual.
We are, yeah, doing the outreach both in English and Spanish.
Very good, very good. Great, thank you. Okay, so the next item was monthly reports. Okay, so what do we have? Anybody want to do their reports today? Okay, Russ?
Okay. On the, in July, had a CABBITS board meeting, and basically, the topic of conversation was developing a strategy for dealing with pandemic loss of revenue. We came up with a number of ideas. On the second Desert Valley Builders Association Legislative Meeting, got an update on new developments in construction taking place in the Coachella Valley, and all the related regulations and/or fees associated with that. On the seventh city council meeting, received update on efforts to clean up this distressed, abandoned, and neglected properties and code enforcement's effort to to get, and you know, I've seen a significant improvement in the look of our city. And this city council has done a terrific job in addressing, addressing that. My, my complaints in the past have been a lot against absentee landlords and, and not keep maintaining the property. I think the city is doing a terrific job in addressing that. On the ninth, the DVBA board meeting, nothing of the interest there. On the fourth, Riverside County Board of Supervisors meeting, we've got a COVID-19 update, which is by now, it's old news, since that was August 4. Several reappointments by supervisors to special council seats. This was interesting to me because I thought, oh, God, we're going into a pandemic of a new disease, and I wondered what was on the table, because I'd never heard of this before. It was a renewal of a local emergency in Riverside County due to the spread of Pierce's disease. And I said, oh, man, what is Pierce's disease? Anyway, it's a disease affecting the grapevine in the wine industry, and it isn't a human born disease. So that was kind of a relief in one way. There was approval of a number of contracts and agreements between the county and various cities, et cetera. That was all for that meeting. On the, on the sixth, Desert Valley Builders Association Legislative Meeting, nothing of interest there. On the 12th, CABBITS Museum Storytelling Night, and that's a limited number of people come in, and they have a gentleman or a person telling stories about CABBITS and his experiences, and living in Alaska, and living with the Inuit tribe, and things like that. It's pretty interesting. So if you see that in your, in, in any of your communications with the CABBITS, it's worth taking a look at. On the 25th, once again, Riverside County Board of Supervisors meeting, that meeting was nearly five hours long. That's five hours of my life I'll never get back. Mostly routine business supervisor, he would have interest for me, anyway, appointed Debbie Franklin, who was a former mayor of Banning, and also was the chairman of the San Gregonio Pass Regional Water Alliance for approximately five years, all during the time that I've been a member of that organization. Both she and Jeff Hewitt were members of that, of that board. So it was nice to see Debbie getting back into public service. One last thing I want to bring up, my, my appointment to the Agua Calleani Tribal Water Authority ends in October. And I was just notified that the tribal council met and voted to renew my appointment for another three years. So they're stuck with me for another three years, and that concludes my report.
Congratulations, Russ.
Thank you.
That's, that's good. Anybody else want to do their reports today?
I could go.
Do them on Monday. Okay, I'm gonna do mine on Monday, too.
Nancy, I, I could go.
Oh, there you go. Okay, go for it.
I just have the one, July 29th and 30th, the Aqua Summer Conference. Overall, I thought it was a good conference for having to be done virtually. The format was still pretty similar to when it was done in person, and they still had breakouts and the keynotes and everything. One of the breakout sessions that stood out was a finance presentation, and they went over some WEFIA loans, which were Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act loans. And they spoke, Coachella Valley Water District was one of the presenters, and they spoke on a loan they received for stormwater management. It was $59 million at 1.9%. So I'm not sure if the WEFIA would work towards, you know, the treatment plant, but with the interest rates so low, it's something to look into. And then overall, the keynote speakers were all really good, Wade Crowfoot and Joaquin, and I'm glad they were able to have the conference instead of having to cancel it. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Ivan. Okay, so nobody else wants to do reports today? Okay, so we will, oh, that's right, we got two pages of them, too. Okay, well, I've only got two. Okay, upcoming events, and, oh, we already did that one, 15 correspondence. Guess there's nothing in the packet, so.
Really, used to thank you from Gretchen.
Is, I don't see anything. How am I, I go to item 15, and then there's nothing in there.
This is 16.
Oh, well, oh, okay, sorry. What's, oh, you're right, 16. Oh, yes, a thank you to Jackie and Gretchen. Oh, okay, what? You. Oh, nice. Okay, that's nice. Oh, I see. Now I got it. Okay. Desert Valley Builders Certificate for.
Being a member.
Yep, being a member. Oh, cute. Oh, I love these things from kids. Thank you for putting these in there. I hadn't got a chance to look at this stuff yet. Oh, I will, though. I'll read those. Oh, that's nice. I like them. Hang them on our refrigerator, you guys. Okay.
Yes, we will have a closed session today, and the item is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. One case, Mission Springs Water District versus Master Meter, case number ED CV 200332 PH TJH.
Okay. Thank, thank you, John. We'll do that in a moment here. Anything else you want to say?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. General Manager's Report.
Okay. Every year, we, of course, are a polling place. And they use the annex. It works out quite nice. We've moved our customer service people back into the building. Here, we will be another polling place, but they're handling it a little different. We're going to be a voting assistance location. I don't know exactly what that means yet, but I'll report back to you in October. But that entails being available more than just the one day, I think. And I'll provide you more information when we meet in, in October. Secondly, we're doing well again with our handling of the COVID issues. So we have no reportable incidences. We are also looking into ways that we can start moving back into the boardroom. We, we look at panels and, and see how we can the cost of those panels or partitions. We may, probably still will have to have the public participate virtually. But, and, and that's not, that would be your decision, Nancy, so we'll, we'll get back to you, and you and I can work on that between now and next month. But our, our design with regard to response to the pandemic seems to be working. I'm extremely pleased. We will be having an all-hands meeting on October 7, respecting, of course, the social distancing. You'll be at the arts. You're all welcome to come out. And have fun. I think we're gonna, Brian, I think we're gonna do it in the AM. We're gonna do burritos? Is that what I understand? Is that correct, Brian?
That is correct.
Okay.
Pardon? What was that date again?
October 7. All right. And will we, will we hear more on that? We'll, we'll send a notice to you. All right. And then, last is Matt would, has put together, and the staff has put together, very nice budget report. This year, it's all part of what we promised to do, part of our public outreach improvements and our strategic plan. Matt, I'm gonna let you touch on that just briefly, if you would. It's in my General Manager's Report if you want to see it. So and, yes, Matt, I will have you in closed session, but you want to take off on this for just a minute? Explain to them what they have here?
Sure. This is just a further development of a budget document that we've been working on the last couple of years to improve the information that's, that's put out each year regarding our, our budget historically. For a lot of years, it was a spreadsheet, and really, the basic documents that we go over is part of our, budget workshop here. So the attempt in this document is just to elaborate on that, go into a little more detail, show it in a little more, you know, better format, and in a format that the average customer can read, and kind of explain some of the intricate details that we go through on an annual basis. So I don't know that I need to necessarily go through it. It's now posted on our website. It's in this, part of this GM report. Obviously, I can answer any questions that there are, but more so, just wanted to let everybody know that it is, it is out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, are you done, Arden? Is that it? Okay, Director's Comments. I'll start with you, Russ.
Follow up on, on my recommendations on, on, or things I'd like to see done in response to COVID-19, the pandemic. in response to COVID-19, the pandemic. Uh, I would like to, again, reach out to staff and have them analyze the possibility of either a pause in our fifth-year rate increase or a rollback to year four of our five-year plan. Um, this would be for, again, a limited time, uh, that if approved, would only take place until the economic crisis caused by the pandemic has stabilized. We, we reached out and did, did this regarding the budget and made a budget, uh, reduction. And I, I'd just like to staff to say, what would the impact be if we did that? And, and, uh, and at least take a look at it to explore that possibility. That's all I have to say.
Thank, thank you, Russ. Um, let's see. Ivan?
All right, yes, I just wanted to compliment staff on that budget report. Um, I did notice it was up on the website, and I thought that was, uh, great. And, uh, page nine has a nice handy chart that kind of compares rates of, uh, surrounding agencies. And it's good to see that we're on the lower end of the chart than some of the other agencies. So, uh, thank you to staff.
Very good. Good comment. Thanks. Um, Randy?
Y'all see, uh, the bulk of my comments from Monday, but Victoria, in case you're not on there, uh, awesome job. I get lots of comments on your, uh, bill inserts, the flyers, the outreach that you're doing is, is really well received, uh, has a good impact on the public.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a team effort.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Comments?
Yeah. Um, I had the opportunity over the weekend to catch up on some of our neighboring agencies' activities by watching their, um, CVWD started posting their meetings on, um, YouTube. So I watched about eight meetings and probably 30 hours' worth of, uh, meetings. I, one of the, um, meetings they held, uh, a, and they discussed an item, uh, what their, their involvement with the sites project up in Northern California, which is, um, a solution to our long-term water, uh, supply here in the Coachella Valley. They actually, uh, moving forward with this at this point, they, they authorized a million-dollar deposit, if you will, on the project that will be a 15-year project before it's completed and delivering water to the, to the valley. One of the items, or one, one portion of that, um, project includes the expansion of the East Branch Canal, which is our, gives us our ability to, uh, to ta- take deliveries from the Delta Project, which, in my view, and I'd like, uh, maybe somebody on our staff to look into this and, and, and tell me if it, if I'm right or, or wrong about this. But that's what, since we, we participated in the formation of the Desert Water Agency in 1962 to achieve that goal, it looks like between a project that the Desert Water Agency is working on that I haven't been informed about because I haven't been following those meetings. We've had other directors participating. They have another project similar to the sites project that CVWD is involved in that will also require that expansion. And that project apparently is, uh, has a shorter timeline on it, which will give us access to the higher-quality water, um, leaving the price tag out. But those two agencies are both moving in that direction, um, to the point that CBDWD just authorized another million dollars. This is their second, uh, payment, um, to, to, to stay with it. And that's a big deal. You know, we spent a couple of million dollars on a lawsuit that really, you know, I, I haven't been able to quite get a full grasp of why we're doing that when, uh, you know, we, so all of that mixed together with things. I think that, uh, this agency needs to take a good, hard look at its position and the way it deals with, um, our neighboring agencies. I think it's been deplorable, quite frankly. And I'd like to see, uh, this agency step forward and begin to have a, a more sound and positive working relationship with the, uh, the, the big two, if you will. We're, you know, together, we're the big three, and, uh, we need to act like it. And it's time that that happens, uh, sooner rather than later. And that'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Um, yeah, ideally, that's their state water contractor, um, Sykes Reservoir, and all the state water contractors. Uh, that's part of the process or the, the, the system that brings the water down from the north to the south. Anyway, um, okay, thank you. Anything else, Steve? I guess he's done.
Well, I, I, I do have, uh, one more thing. During one of those, uh, meetings, and I, 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 I know that you weren't involved in this, as, uh, even though you're on the, uh, the regional board, I can't imagine that you would have participated in this, uh, what seems almost like a, a devious ploy. And I know that's not what it was because you would never do such a thing. Um, but I was alarmed to hear that, um, the board that you sit on will not allow Coachella Valley Water District to deliver their treated, uh, water to golf courses, to water, uh, because apparently it's, um, even though it, it exceeds drinking water standards and its chlorine content, you won't allow chlorine to be, uh, used on, uh, the areas of the desert where the flood-controlled channels are running. So I'd like to know at some point in the future what the, what the game was there.
Okay, well, I would suggest you call and ask the regional board or attend one of the meetings and ask it that, because this board is not under our jurisdiction, so.
You're our representative on that board, and, uh, I think the community needs to, deserves to know what you're up to when it comes to dealing with these agencies that you've got a lawsuit against that you can't even explain. It's time for you to lay it out for folks, what, what you're really up to, because I can't figure it out.
Complicated issue. Okay. Are you done now? Okay, yes. Okay, thank you. Um, my comments have to do with our, our comp reports. I have, at the last several months, there's been some big issues going on, um, between Director Grusha's having a hard time filling out his time cards, um, and it's getting staff put in the middle here. So I would, Dory, do you have a picture of the, 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 um, the report form? We used to use this report form years ago, not years ago, not too awfully long ago. It has, uh, the places where the board members fill it out, and they sign it. Um, they sign, and it's so, so we get the, the signature. And, uh, and I'd like to put this on the agenda for Monday's meeting so that we can discuss this. And, and, and then at that point, I will, um, and maybe I should do it now. The, the purpose of this is that we, I received, well, Arden and I received a, a, from, uh, Mr. Grusha on September 15th. And he has, and, well, let me read it to you. "As we're, as you are aware, your staff has instituted changes in process of board compensation and reimbursement." Um, I don't notice any changes. I didn't notice any. "At my first opportunity, provide, at your first opportunity, pride me with a copy of each director's request of board stipends, compensation, reimbursement, and expenses, including all payments and copies of all credit card charges, statements and invoices, and all communications between all directors and all staff for the past three years. This will allow myself and the public to better understand the process, ensuring treatment is fair and consistent among all elected board members, and ensuring that all district funds are treated with complete respect. The policies have changed to the point of concern, as some staff has indicated to me, uncertainty, uncertainty as to the new policies and procedures. This should happen with top priority as public funds are involved at risk." Um, well, part of this I, I agree with. Uh, they should, the public fund should definitely be treated with, with respect, and we should, they should, we should make them top priority. So I, I was saying, we need to change this process of how we turn in our time cards. And so, um, I want to add it to the agenda because I can't talk about it now. That's just the, the, the report on what I would like to talk about. So, uh, Dory, can we do that? Or Arden, who, I, I can't, Dory, you can take that down. Okay.
Yes, I will do, um, an addendum for Monday's meeting to add that to the agenda.
We will work with JP to, you know, have that on the agenda for Monday.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to get everybody's opinion on it. I can't talk to you guys individually unless we do it this way. So that's, that's why I'm doing this. Okay, so with that, we're going to go into closed sessions. There's my agenda now. Okay, closed session. So I guess, Dory, you've got to put us in a room or do something.
And, Dory?
Yes.
I need two minutes.
Okay.
Do I need to have, uh, Mr. Sloback and Mr. Murphy join?
They should join now, yes. So then I can put them in the...
Let me text them and have them do that first.
Thank you.
Do I need to do anything? Are you gonna move us all over?
I'm gonna move you over.
Okay, I'll be right back in two minutes. Relax.